Call the order. Uh, this is for the workshop agenda. Call order at six seventeen. For the workshop discussion, discuss the fall city cleanup dates. We want to do it before deer season, that's all I know. We want to do it before deer season, that's what I have told.
It's too late. You just can't do it on the day.
Maybe after deer season. I've, deer season was in there.
After deer season, that's true.
How did we, okay, I missed that whole thing. Everyone's looking at me, look. I haven't been out hunting deer, I don't know.
Can I talk about past pre- past precedent?
Sure.
Really quickly, I think you're only having one day. Cause usually on Sunday. I think you get the people up here to try hoping that there ain't gonna be nobody here to, and they duck TVs and whatever else. And, uh, I mean, and I gotta sit there and say, I was all for with that tire trailer. That tire trailer is a joke.
Was the full, the joke as in overfull or underfull?
No. You'll have a handful of people that'll bring forty-five tires up there each. And then every, and every one of them, you staked on there that you can't, you're not, and they're not supposed to bring tractor tires and truck tires. Heck, they'll have a whole load of the tractor tires and truck tires that bring up here. I mean, uh, there need to be some more better stricter guidelines and adhere to a lot better.
Well, you don't turn them away, or nobody's here when they bring them in.
I know we turn them away.
Well, well, uh, that, you turn some of them away, but doesn't stop it, no.
Or just quit having a tire trailer.
Well, and I'm just sitting there saying that to us after, it, last time I came up here and packed the trailers down my backhoe and, uh, guy showed us your buddy Marty, he wanted to throw some stuff in there. That's why I say, I think I could do it in one day and, you know.
So did you?
I, I, you know, put from eight to six and that'd be it, you know.
Possibly the twenty-second.
What?
The twenty-second.
I think whether it's one day or two days.
To do it on the twenty-second?
Oh, I don't care about the date, I'm just sitting there saying that it is. I think it don't need to be just a day deal and.
The twenty-second fall to Thanksgiving, that's the next week.
Uh, Thanksgiving falls on the twenty-seventh, the Thursday after, so it'd be the weekend before Thanksgiving.
Are there any projections to the twenty-second? The weekend of the twenty-second?
I don't think, we, I care. Y'all usually coming in the, man, I think so.
I'm gonna be in Kentucky, almost all of November, so.
And then we're gonna talk, are we gonna be looking at having Eric come up here?
Yeah.
That's another thing we gotta look into.
Probably need to check his schedule.
He's just waiting for the date.
Okay.
So twenty-second? Any other input?
I don't have a comment about the date, but I do have a comment about the price. He's wanting to go up, and it, and, and the landfill went up, it went up to sixty-five dollars.
Yeah.
But, everybody here is a McClintock County resident. And if you're a McClintock County resident, and if you're a resident, you're not commercial, you get it for fifty-two dollars. I think we at least ought to call them and say, hey, this is what this is. This is not really a commercial thing, this is the residents pulling this together, can you give us the fifty-two dollar ton price? Just a phone call, just a, that doesn't cost anything to us.
Yeah. And are we gonna pay Eric the same fee, but he's been getting five hundred pre-COVID? Five hundred bucks for two days.
Eric really earns that money.
Yeah.
Friday he goes out and picks up.
Yeah, it's worth every bit of that. Yeah, no, yeah, it's, I think he's woefully underpaid for what he does, he sits out here both days, all day from start to finish.
I agree.
Sweating.
That's nothing.
But you're gonna do it one day.
Yeah. So whatever, you guys need to figure out what the rate is. Discuss making the schedule during the holidays, city secretary.
Um, so the fourth Thursday in November and the fourth Thursday in December are Thanksgiving and Christmas respectively, and I don't think anyone wants that to be a day.
Book the week before.
One of them, I know Jonathan, you had.
Yeah, I have some, I'm trying to find the, uh. Any input?
Because the fourth Thanksgiving.
Yeah. Should be the fourteenth, am I reading this right, the fourteenth to the twenty-eighth? Or, I'm sorry, no, I'm sorry, the thirteenth to the twenty-seventh.
The twentieth is a, the twentieth is the third before Thanksgiving and the eighteenth is the.
Yes, no, spring seven is Thanksgiving, it would have to be.
Thirteen to the twentieth.
Thirteen to the twentieth and. The twenty-eighth is the third before Thanksgiving.
Do it the week, week before Thanksgiving, the week before Christmas.
No, we don't.
The twentieth and the eighteenth.
I can't do the eighteenth.
We're not necessarily married to a Thursday either.
I, I am married. I thought I'm, I don't know. I mean, I'm not, but I don't, I don't.
I don't think we're, I, I don't wanna misspeak or speak out of turn, but I don't think we're necessarily married to a Thursday.
Originally, it was the second Thursday of that month. Then it was changed to the third Thursday of each month, and then it got changed to the fourth Thursday, so people know what, there's a certain day of the month or a week that things gonna be held, now that was voted on.
Right, but if we're doing an exception.
But you can, you can reschedule some schedules like this when you got conflicts, that's not a problem. But just to be deciding whenever you want to have, one, I don't think it's a good idea.
Well, you've got a conflict.
I got five, so I have to go to you.
Like I said. Do it that, do it that Monday then. With Mon, that Monday is to, that's the Thursday, you do, can you do it that Monday?
I can do Mondays, Tuesday and Thursdays are my only days tonight.
Yeah, cause Mon, cause Mondays, well, the reason I don't like Thursdays, we have meat on Thursdays, a bunch of stuff happens on Thursdays for schools and stuff. You got JV games, you got volleyball games, you got stuff happening at schools and we can't ever make it because we're always up here.
So we're talking seventeenth or fifteenth?
Yeah, or fifteenth or twenty-second.
Well, you know, anything on Thanksgiving week, I'm, I'm out.
Okay.
Do it that Monday, that first, that's first weekend before Thanksgiving week, that Monday.
Jack, Zach just said he's gonna be here.
The seventeenth of, the seventeenth of November, I keep it.
Yeah.
But I can't be here the twenty-fourth.
Right. You're seeing the seventeen, bucky?
Yes, the week before Thanksgiving, that Monday.
Okay.
So, cause Jonathan did say he can make it through too.
Seventeenth and then in December?
Fifteenth and December.
You get those dotted down?
Is that, is that the ones for, well, y'all have to make a motion.
Right, but they're gonna have to make the motion, but remind us of the date.
Yeah, November seventeenth and December fifteenth.
Okay. I'm C, discuss the city credit card usage policy, Holly.
Uh, yes, so in your packet, I put up a sample here. Um, this is just because it was extremely concerning to me that it appeared like people are carrying these cards in their wallets and they're using them, um, whenever they want to. So I don't think that that's appropriate, um, use of the city credit card, that it's not meant to be, it's not designed to be that way. So, um, based on the information that was turned in, last council meeting, it did appear like the homeowners and secretary was, you know, just using that card, carrying it with her to her house and fueling up whenever she wanted to, and that, that's not appropriate. So I have a sample here of some credit card guy, uh, use guidelines, because I don't feel like those cards should be used that way. Um, y'all can read through that, this is just an example, I did wanna get with David to see if there's anything else that could be added or anything else that might need to be changed specifically just because of our city. Um, on the back of that is a credit card checkout log. Um, so I feel like the credit cards should be kept here at city hall, and that when they need to be used, they need to be checked out, signed in, and receipts need to be turned in with them, uh, within twenty-four hours and when you're checked out. So that's just my ideas, if y'all have any other ideas on it, but I do feel like we need to reel in the credit card spending.
Can we speak on?
Yeah, yeah.
Kevin goes one three eight six six. In my opinion, I think you need to do exactly what's been brought up. When it comes to this credit card spending and the spending of our money, I think you do, need to do it all, I think you need to go back, I don't know, five, six years to do it all, of what the spending habits was, because that's gonna coincide, in my opinion, with, you got a budget committee coming up, the way I understand it. And it's gonna coincide with the budget committee, because you can look at historicals and see what that spending habit was to help balance the budget. And I would assume that the budget committee is there to balance a budget, not be a deficit budget. So in my opinion, I'm just, this is just my opinion and you can do whatever you want. But what I'm saying is, is I think you need to go back several years and see what the spending habits was on this credit card and on everything else, just to see what the history is so you can do a proper balanced budget when it comes to it. So that way, and allocations a month, just make sure that that allocation is right. I mean, just for an example, my wife's on the school board here. They talk about histories of schools right now that other schools are in trouble. And one of the reasons they're in trouble is because when COVID money came out, those schools used that COVID money to give raises to teachers, and now they're in trouble because they can't keep up with those raises of teachers. I know we're not a school, but what I'm saying is, when it comes to a budget, we need to know the spending habits of the city. So in my opinion, go back, do a forensic audit of all the spending, every bit of it, and see where it was allocated and what was, what it was used for. Then that way you can get a good balanced budget, when that budget committee sets down with all the data in front of it. That's just my two cents.
The first audit only on the same?
On all of it.
We have an annual audit every year. Yeah, but to do so, to take the data.
Yeah, that's not a deep dive, and a first audit could cost up to two thousand dollars.
Yeah.
I'm like, can I get your copy?
Bill?
Uh, on, on this credit card usage guideline, I just might offer a suggestion. I know some entities that have, deal with public money, okay? Public funds, they have a radius, like say thirty miles, thirty-five miles, you know, thirty-five, forty miles radius of the, like, city, for example. No money can be spent, uh, see, for each or anything, it's like a day trip thing. Now, I understand going to Austin or going somewhere else, yes. But for local, what I would consider, within a thirty, thirty-five, forty mile radius, that, uh, that ought to be considered, be part of this procedure. Uh, it's, I know, I know the federal elected officials have such a thing in there. Policy of what they can buy and get and stuff, so that's just a thought. It's not really something to consider, uh, policy. On, that, that way, uh, you know, if you, if, if I was to go to an meeting with some white guys, I would have to eat with all as well as home, so. No, I don't think that should be used, public money to feed myself when I'm down there, in my own business.
Don?
I think y'all have mentioned credit cards with per diem period, aren't you? But, uh, a credit card, a credit card for the city shouldn't be spent on anything except supplies for the city or something for the city. That's a law. Uh, and per diem, if you go somewhere, you've got a certain amount of money, you need to pay for knowledge, any knowledge, that's another thing. But, uh, if you spend ten cents and it's a store and soda, that's your problem.
Yeah, well, the only thing I will throw out on this, you know, if, if we go back five years, I would say, how much does that cost justify, cause I know we spent probably two hundred dollars in city secretary labor trying to chase down a five dollar receipt for chocolate milk. So they, we do wanna keep a balance, I think, you know, but I, I, I would love to have projections, I've never had a position, like, I know my three companies, I can, I have annual reports and I look, I know exactly what's coming in, I know where it's going out. I, you know, it's, I get a crystal clear snapshot.
But you know also what you're often asked is part of credit card, when you send money to people that can use it.
Yeah, yeah, and then, we, we learned, and I'll, and I'll own this, it was my own mistake, I did not know that there was a thirty-eight dollar per diem, so, so everyone's clear, I reimbursed the city for the entire meal, in fact, plus six bucks, so.
I don't know how much per diem, but you gotta.
Yeah, no, no, my, yeah, that was my mistake, I'll own it.
I, I got another question here, down at the bottom says allow, but expenses have been paid for borrowing, it's got fuel costs and power. If you're getting per diem, you don't get fuel on top of that, so that should just be per diem.
Right, you won't get a per diem if you use the credit card to pay for your fuel.
Okay.
Yeah. No, and so just to address the per diem thing, I am actually working on an actual per diem policy as well, I just did not have that prepared for this meeting.
You don't get fuel costs anyway, you get mileage, that's against the law if you charge fuel.
That's what I'm.
You can't fill up your tank, you've got, you've got mileage.
Right, it's from like the trip to, uh, yes, you are correct on that.
Fuel cost and card shouldn't, shouldn't be in a, a list. I mean, the credit card is what I'm getting at.
Item D, discuss adopting a formal time off request form. Ms, Mrs. Hurway, you're up.
Uh, yes, so David is not here, but I've been, uh, talking to him about, uh, some of the things that are in the employee handbook that Molly had done. And one of the things that I had wanted to do was make it a formal form for employee time off, especially, I know right now we just got Sarah, but eventually if we get the other positions that we have open filled, if any of those employees need to take time off, there's not a specific time off form. And that is something that I think that we need to track, so in addition to that time, uh, time off form, I'm also working on some other possible revisions to that employee handbook, uh, just to make it make a little bit better sense and, uh, go along with what is typical of an employee handbook. So, and I just wanted to bring that to everybody's attention, that is something that I'm working on, and if you want anything specific, then let me know, and I will see what I can do about getting it happening.
Amen. Uh, before to the main game, Melissa? Melissa?
I was gonna ask if y'all implemented any type of time sheets or a time clock system yet to, for hourly people to clock in there? Because that's something that needs to be taken care of instead of writing times down, sticking notes and other things. And I just wanna know if y'all have been doing that or implemented it yet. I know y'all talked about it.
We didn't even settle on a time sheet program.
Uh, we hadn't settled.
I have still been using that same app on my phone, it like generates reports, and I think I've even shown really many reports that made.
Is it official?
I mean.
Sort of, I use them.
Yeah, I feel like it is, but I'm not the one that does it.
Also to answer Melissa's question.
No, it'll show, it shows on there, you know, like what time I clock in and what time I clock out, how long my break was, what the date is, all that.
Did you print that off and somebody signed it, and does, does Holly get to see it and sign it too, or she's the one?
I usually send to Gail, but if, if, you know, if she, like, if you want me to start copying you on those or whatever.
Somebody needs to be looking at that.
Yeah. Well, I think in that meeting when we talked about that, I think you were, uh, Eddie was supposed to sign off on your time sheet.
Yeah, I probably sent, I, I see her at least two or three times a week, so.
Does it, does it have GPS?
Yeah, but it needs, it needs to be signed off on.
Yeah.
It does not have GPS attached to it, but, uh, I, I don't think that one can, but I guess the issue with that is sometimes part of my job is going to the bank or going to pick up checks or all that, so.
So you may not come here if you start your day.
I, I usually come here in the morning, like, to pick up, you know, papers or check the email before I go places. Like, I'll start my day here, buy some write-ins, so I'll start here and, you know, end up here.
But if it was automatically G O fence, if she left here, it would automatically clock her out?
Yeah.
That's good. That would be the thing for that. So, I mean, for the record, I'll say I'm very, a lot less worried about this one, like, she's always here, like, always, so. But I understand that's a concern and I don't think it'd be anything, I'll make sure that we get it signed off. Is it a printable ver, is it a printable version, does it have a signature?
Every, every week.
Don't die on me, don't die, we got the big announcement.
Have we got the phone picture up?
No.
Melissa? Melissa?
The only other thing I, I wanted to ask about, Sarah is full time now, right?
Yeah.
Okay, the hours and days that this city hall shows.
Yeah, we, we gotta get a town, we have to get that fixed, we, we did see your email.
I guess the, the thing we need to think about is.
The door too.
Yeah, there's a sign on the door also that has those same hours, that one has to be updated. We paid thirty-five hundred dollars or four thousand, whatever you did, for that website, and if you're going to pay that much for a website, you need to use. They haven't picked new hours yet, cause where I was going, like, they have to pick them up. I don't, I don't know if that's something that needs to go through a motion, but on the same hand, if it, if this, it goes back to, some days I do have to run errands, so what I've been doing is, if I don't have errand, or if I have errands to run, I try to do it on Tuesdays and Thursdays. That way it's almost guaranteed that during those hours that it's open, I'm here, cause I'm like, I'm the only, you know, employee. So if it was open five days and we, eight hours a day, and I had to be here for all that, I then could not run errands.
All you have to do is come and.
Well, I know, I just such, I've just been going off what's been on the door, and that, it just has to go through the council yet. But if that's something that they, you know, if they wanna update the posted hours, then I can do that.
We'd have to address that, actually, we'd have to address that as a different agenda item, that's not really on this one, so it would be the formal time off form. Um, item E, oh, really?
Well, just y'all were talking about the website and stuff.
I, I, I wanna stick to the agenda, well, go ahead, go ahead.
Well, y'all, there is a place on there, on that website to put packets and all that stuff, that could include your financial report and everything. It's not being used, and you may actually wanna go by people coming up here and asking for stuff. Some of this stuff is on the website, you wouldn't have to come up here and ask for it. You, you can find, you can go and look, but it's not there because it's not being utilized to a total extent, because not all this is being put on the website.
Is that, that, I, I promise you, it's gonna be in the works, like, there's, there's just the two of us, and really it's mostly her, you know, but we, we've got some big announcements on the tech side of things for this month, that I'll cover in the American Report. Um, item E, discuss the traffic study for Hamilton and Quill and Trace, Rick Maddox, Mr. Maddox, the chair recognizes you. Yes, thank you, um, well, funny enough, I'm, Buck and I are actually, I voted down on the, the signs, but, cause they don't tie into any kind of law enforcement. But, um, and I don't know, Sarah, did you find out if those signs tie into data at all?
So the, in the package, we'll find an example of the data that we can get from the traffic trailer that we can get for free from the Waco, Michigan College of Planning and Order System.
Okay. And that, what is, what is that gonna do exactly? That's gonna collect data?
So, yeah, there's.
Yes.
Yeah, this one right here? Okay.
Yeah, that's an example of what kind of data we will get.
So I guess, um, Charlie, Charlie Fisher, who is.
No, but I found.
That's the one, that's the one that says.
Yes.
Raise of these data.
Okay, so it's right down in the, yeah.
Yeah.
You know where, uh, where, Miss White, you see it, or Chris White is?
Is that by, uh?
By, by Paintboard?
Yeah, yeah.
Right down the road, right, right down the road, probably about twenty feet, right there.
Yeah.
But, uh, that, that'd be on the next agenda, cause I didn't, I couldn't do that, but it's a chapter.
Well, I, I think that's, I think that's great because.
The reason to use the data, um, what you're trying to do is, they'll get the data of what the usual speeds for cars going through those roads are. And so you're trying to collect enough cars to see what people are actually driving on it. And so then what you'll do is you'll either go through and assess that data, and you're looking for that eighty-fifth percentile of what the speed of cars going through is. Uh, and then what'll happen is usually cities will either go through that and try to find out on their own, or they'll hire an engineering firm to assess what that is, and then figure out where they need the signs to be. Um, so that's kind of the process people use, of what data is supposed to kinda go forward according to the people.
Which is great, but Sarah, you're saying if we can get them for free, right, we can go ahead and collect that data anyway, replace it in hot spots. So we can, really, one?
You get one at a time.
But you can, you can move it though, right?
I, I think so, if you have the equipment to, that I'll have to check on, but I know it is free, we, the data free.
If it's, if it's something we can hitch up and move ourselves, that'd be great, just collect data.
Yeah, cause I think it's just like a thing on wheels.
And what, how long, so David, David, how long does, uh, how long do we need to collect, you know, data, you know, for the next, the next phase?
I actually don't know, but I know the people aren't gonna ask to get that answer.
Okay, well, to talk about signs, me and Charlie Fisher, I picked him up over the weekend, we went and looked at places to put the signs, children of play signs. And, uh, and where we, for, uh, Quill and Trace and the circle around, uh, uh, Wildcat Circle, the circle that goes around there, it'd be probably ten signs altogether. Ten signs. There'd be three going down Hamilton, one, a one over there in the back part by Your Place Champ. And, uh, yeah, three more on the other side, and then the rest on Quill and Trace. And, uh, and I looked up the prices, that, that's gonna be around nine hundred to a thousand dollars for aluminum signs, the posts and everything, or put them in. But, uh, I'll bring it up on the next agenda, I'll put it on the next agenda and have, and have a total price for the signs. For this children of play sign, for yellow with a little kid playing, it says, child, children of play. Well, I can get a, I can get four of them for sixty-nine bucks, aluminum.
Rick, this survey is sixteen days.
Sixteen days?
Sixty to twenty-seven.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, especially, I think, I mean, for, at least for my road, when we hit some idiots going eighty miles an hour, I mean. Oh, I got him on camera, it's, it's. No, they was, yeah, they were really bad. It's so bad. I almost got killed once. Yeah, well, I lost one dog and then I almost lost the second one too, so, um, it is, uh, yeah, it's, and I have offense, so. It's, um, yeah, anyway, we all know the people's feet, and then from talking to other citizens around town, almost everyone had agreed, like, yes, yes, let's do this. We're done with, someone just blazing by at seventy, eighty miles an hour, the problem is, you know, if you're on, if you're on field somewhat, that's one thing, you know, but when you've got these tight houses and just, you know, I had a neighbor, a friend of mine, almost got hit, they were backing out, car is blazing by, getting out of nowhere. So, I mean, uh, I think we'll be able to collect the data pretty quickly and then be able to move into that, the next phase with the data to go, you know, whether that's gonna be, so.
But it does need to be consistent on all of the people, is that we only did two days?
Oh, yeah, no, I. Oh, yeah, no, I, I mean, I'm, I'm a fan of going longer if we can, yeah, get way more, get way more data, so.
Like I said, they'll, they'll be using the traffic trailers for the, I, I think, next two months, so that'll give us plenty of time to kind of figure out all the rest of the questions that we'll ask about it.
Great. Anything else, Mr. Maddox?
Uh, yeah, if anyone that's listening or online, if you have a, a request for your road, just move the trailers, you know, to your road or whatever, obviously, comment or, you know, reach out to us, and let us know so we can find some, some spots for you.
Okay, I don't know, discuss the variance request submitted by John Adams. John Adams is sitting back there, did you guys see his variance request?
Yes.
Was variance for? He's got a spot on Joanne Drive, this would break the five acre minimum, but it's on Joanne Drive.
Still in, still in the city.
Yes, unfortunately, this is empty, isn't it?
So the request is, right now, it's a one point four seven three acre lot on Joanne. They would want to divide that in half, so you would then have two point seven three six acre lots, um, and they would be a budding road, so it'd be long days. Does that kind of encompass everything, or is there anything you'd like to add?
Yes.
What questions do y'all have for that?
I'm gonna do a presentation later, but hopefully I can get the council's buy-in, or I think I can find a happy medium for some of this stuff, but I'm, I'm...
I'll comment on that. You said it doesn't meet the five acre, this doesn't even meet the one acre, or next step we did a way. Is that what you said?
No, I will say it is a neighborhood, so it's not breaking a farm, it's just kind of been wasted land, if it's not subdivision. So, we're, we're kind of trying to clean up the area too, that old fallen down house on it, we've already cleaned that up, removed that.
I saw that.
So, I think overall, it'll, and we plan to either build or move a decent structure in that place.
Well, and that segues into item G, discuss possible changes to ordinance amendment twenty-five dash zero eight dash A, amending Golson ordinance code, uh, code section ten dot two, zero two dot zero zero nine, Jonathan?
Uh, I put this on there, I wanted to discuss possibly changing something in the ordinance to where right now we have it where you can subdivide it for a child or direct relative. I wanted to change it to where you can subdivide it for a legal family member or a, a family member of the third degree. So it'd still be a legal family member, and then also put in there that once the land has been subdivided, it cannot be then resold for three years.
And this is for, uh, for the five to two and a half, can you do that, councilman?
It would be a third degree, so the first degree is out of the red and out, that's just your, um, parents and then your, um, children, so it's very narrow. Second degree would be the one range above that, so that's where you're getting the grandparents and then count more brothers and sisters. Kind of get it more into the cousin range, uncle's age.
So, that's why I requested, that's why I suggested the third degree, and I suggested three years to, that way, hey, if I sell it to my brother, he's gonna keep it for three years, he's not gonna turn around and say, oh, you sold it to me, now I'm gonna turn around and sell it to someone else. And I just brought this up in discussion, so it's not a motion yet. If there's any other discussion of it.
Yeah, it's still, it's still family members, it's still...
That's only inheritance, right, that's not selling, because the way the greatest road around hell, we didn't, you can't sell it to your family member, it's only inheritance, we got it in the heritage, in the he- in the heritage, when they die, that we get it.
No, we can sell it.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm totally against that, sell, sell.
But like to your son or something.
Yeah, sell it to a family member.
Yeah, you sell it to a family member.
Or as a gift.
Or like a gift to...
Melissa, you got a question?
I, I just, I guess I'm having a hard time understanding, y'all didn't help Golson chop it up, you put in the ordinances for five acres. Now, every time we turn around, it seems like we're getting variances and stuff for one acres and one like this and one like that.
So we haven't done, we haven't done any variance. This hasn't approved.
But we've had several of them that have been approved.
No, no, no.
There's not one.
We, I, I denied, I denied one last month.
Yeah. The one that, the one variance that went through, that ordinance wasn't, yeah, wasn't a variance, that ordinance wasn't in place. That was the Daniel May one, right?
Y'all haven't, he's gonna chop, he's gonna chop his up into...
That was before this was...
One acres?
That was before this was put in. This ordinance.
And then this ordinance is a living document, that's why I was asking about, you know...
It does matter, it's before this.
Not, not really, it's definitely...
Yeah, that's crystal clear, too, you can check this, check the minutes and check the, check the video.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I would, I would refer people to go back and watch the video from that evening.
Yes.
You know what, I'm gonna shift to item J.
Wait, do you got a question?
Oh.
So, in that ordinance, is there any distinction between farmland or a larger parcel or strictly an acre?
Not at, not at this point.
Okay.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna take an agenda item out of work.
I think it's just anything in the incorporated city.
Oh, is it, is there any more discussion on this, I'm sorry, thank you. Okay, let, let me move, uh, item J, discuss city planning, I'm gonna move that up in the agenda because it actually fits in with this. I put together a PowerPoint presentation, okay. Um, I think we can, I'll take a look, and we can agree probably the five acre minimum doesn't seem to be working, right, we've had, every single meeting, we've had a variance.
I disagree.
Look, hold on, let me get the presentation out, Mr. Maddox, I think you're gonna like this, I wanna, I wanna, I hopefully...
I won't be surprised.
Yes.
I won't be surprised.
One more space, there we go, twenty twenty-five, city planning, city of Golson zoning proposal, I spoke with, uh, David over the phone, and we're trying to figure out something, ultimately, I think everybody up here wants to have something that will work for the city of Golson. The, hopefully I'm right on that, but, next slide. If you look at Houston, Houston didn't have any city planning, so then you get weird anomalies, like, you got your laser pointer, city secretary, that big industrial center right there.
And the house from up.
Yeah, and then you got that house right there, in the middle of the big industrial center, and that's what we're basically gonna have here, we have these big giant farms, and right in the middle of the farm, someone plops their house. So, I would say that we'd wanna have some form of planning, but I don't get a vote in the matter. Next slide. So, everything I've taken away, I feel very strongly, everybody in this room wants to keep Golson country, that's all I hear, Bucky ran on keep Golson country, I wanna keep Golson country, I bought into the country. Passive management is not gonna get us there, we know that, just sitting there and letting them chop it up is where we are, this stuff that we're talking about doing should have been done five years ago, but we haven't done it, so we've got to be very, very active. Hopefully, I can get the city council's buy-in on this, we have developers on our doorstep, Chance, how many water meters are they asking for, or what were they querying you on, on that land that was just bought south here, was it eighty meters?
Uh, there's been multiple inquiries on that, but you're talking about forty-five to fifty to sixty.
So they're coming, they're at our doorstep, we waited for a very long time, and now everything's a white-hot emergency, which is why we adopted that five acre minimum, was to put the brakes on it. Also, the more property that's sold out here, the higher your property values go up, and everybody's already complaining about property taxes, and this is the real taxes, next slide. This isn't your city of Golson taxes, which is a hundred and twenty-nine bucks, this is the ISD, you know, that's a thousand, and your five twenty-two for McLennan County, those go up exponentially, the more people that we add out here, next slide. So this is my proposal, and I, we can have two zones of development, and what I am proposing is we have zone A and zone B, and there's a different set of ordinances for each zone. Inside those yellow boxes, if you look really closely, those are already developed areas, like the areas that they wanna split up and get a variance for, those houses are stacked on top of each other already. On, out, on, uh, Joanne Drive, there, the houses, some of them are on half acre lots, it, to me, huh, on Joanne?
There's no house on a half acre lot on there.
A quarter acre?
No.
They're really close, I could be off on that, but they're, they're stacked up...
There's one that's like an acre that has three houses on it.
Yeah, there, there's some on, on Joanne, and I might be mixing them up, Joanne, Oak, Alto Lane, they've got some, anyway, where I'm going with that is, those are kind of developed towards the suburbs, same thing with Tom McCartney Lane, Brandon Lane, High Lane, that's in that area, that is like a Golson suburb already, those houses are really, really close, that's not farmland, nobody's gonna be farming there. Same thing down with, uh, Brazos Loop, that area down there, that's already developed, you know, there's no turning back to the clock on those, and that's kind of where I'm going with that. So if we do, call that zone A, and, and that would include you, Bucky, because I know you had mentioned you had, were concerned about what you could do with your land. If we do zone A, which we treat as more like a residential area, and we have separate ordinances for those where we say you can split it down to whatever, a one acre or, or a half acre, whatever, whatever, I'm confused on the acreage, but whatever the minimum, because I know we've got some that are under one acre, I know we have some, and I...
More than half on Brazos Loop or less than one acre.
Yeah, there we go, so maybe I, yeah, I, so I might be getting confused, it might have been Brazos Loop, but I know there were some that were on...
Yeah, Brazos Loop, yeah.
Yeah, so if those are already developed, do we really care if someone on Brazos Loop takes a one acre lot and splits it into a half acre lot when they already have acre lots there, I don't know. Next slide, so, this is what I was thinking for our zones. Tom McCartney Lane down to Brazos Loop, and the roads that would be included in there would be, uh, Wildcat Circle, Tom McCartney Lane, High Lane, Brandon Lane, Brazos Loop, that's that whole section that's kind of by the Baptist Church and the, the Golson store. Uh, and then down on Brazos Loop, on the bottom there, Woodway, Little Valley, and Rio Rim, those are already split up like residential housing already. So those are the two areas I was talking about there, and then up north, basically, Joanne Drive, which is already split up, and that's where they wanna split their parcel up. Uh, Oak Street, which is already split up quite a bit, and then Alto Lane, which is already split up. Now, Rick, I know you live north on Hamilton, and you live more, if you go to the left of that, that's all farmland. So that's why I'm saying, if we take zones and we have zone one, and we, we treat that guy as, as residential, and then zone two, we treat as, this is our agricultural, this is our five acre minimum, then I think we can meet, you know, because what I see with this, what I see going on, is I feel like we have an all or nothing, and I'd like to get somewhere in the middle. Where instead of it's a, a five acre or nothing, maybe we can get somewhere, we can say like, well, this is gonna be our development area, and that's also gonna help us with the city planning going forward, which we've got, this should have been done five years ago. There's no if, ands, or buts about it, once we broke a thousand people, we, in fact, I, I know, I attended city council meetings a long time ago when things were coming up like this, and we, we're in the position that we're in now, because we did things like adopt code or ordinances, and we didn't adopt, you know, city planning and, and code enforcement and the stuff that goes with it, it should have been an all or nothing.
Just so everybody understands, when it comes to zoning, I'm, I'm an appraiser, so I deal with zoning and ordinances every day with my job. So, when it comes to zoning, a lot of times, which, what I have to look at, what I have to research in those zonings is what is permitted in that area. So, basically, in a nutshell, what he's breaking down here is, is you can designate certain areas a zone R, R one, zone C for commercials, zone...
Right.
You know, light industrial, that kind of deal, but what you do is you break it down into what's permitted within it.
Right.
And so, I think what he's trying to say is, just so y'all know in a nutshell, is that you can allow certain things inside of a zoning or, in a side of a zoning, in other words, a residential property can be, it can be a mixed use. Agriculture, you can put it, you can still do residential in an agricultural zoning, except it can be larger acres, or you can run animal zoning. It's, it all based on how we develop it when, going forward, that you can look at what the permitted uses is, so just so y'all understand what I'm saying.
Yeah, and, 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 correct me if I'm wrong, and have at it, city council, you can attack me all you want, but I, I think the spirit behind that five acre or, uh, minimum, the spirit behind that was trying to preserve the country aspect of, of Golson, right?
Well, it, it was actually just to kind of stop the bleeding.
Yeah.
Temporarily, temporarily, so that we can kind of get a plan, but we didn't have one, and I, I don't have a problem with that, that's, I don't, I don't disagree with that.
I thought we were gonna entrust planning and zoning to set all that up and present us with something.
We don't even have planning and zoning, I, they lost two people, so I gotta figure out something to reconstitute them again, so...
I don't have a problem with that.
I, and you know the thing...
But it's not in place yet.
As, as it stands right now, I got like six months left or whatever, seven months, I will make this, you know, I would ask the council not to put extra stuff on my agenda, and I will focus on this and the park, and let's try and get, plow through this as much as possible.
Look, I, I get that, and I, I hear, and what Kevin's saying, I mean, look, it, it does, there's a lot of, um, yeah, it does make sense also as a city to start having that zoning, and I, I can, I can get behind, hold on, I can get behind that, um, I think, um, but I do think, um, I'd like to, could, I mean, could we, if we were to have these zones, would we be able to put site-built homes? That's something we could add.
Well, we can't, that's already been covered, like, that's one thing...
Because that's the one thing, like, if we do go into that, and then we get a bunch of Clayton Homes and that, I mean, what's the whole, what's the point?
I don't think you can designate site-built.
You can designate that permitted use in the, in a zoning area, you can say, manufacturer home, you can say...
You have to have a place for the manufacturer homes also, you can...
Yeah, I'm not saying, all's I'm giving you is description of what can happen, and what happens in other places that I researched.
If you're gonna zone one spot and build, you gotta have a zone for...
You don't dare say you're selling a sign of Golson, you're talking about zoning Golson, Texas.
There's...
I live on nine thirty-three up here, everything around here, if he sells this place, he can do, they can do what they want to with it, they're not in the city. They're across the street from it.
Right.
They sell much of that, they can do what they want to with it, they're not in the city. You can't zone it if the, you got too many chemicals to where you can't put an addition here, because somebody might come by the land next to it and put a bigger addition in.
I, I think...
We have no control over it.
Well, I think what the idea behind this is, 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 is this is a, but right now, we have nothing, this is a start, like, this is the problem, because we, that kind of approach, we haven't done the stuff that, this should have been done a while ago.
You can't zone it. You can't zone it.
Why?
It's not the city.
No, not your area.
So you go and what, zone what lives in the city, all you're doing is, is saying, hey, your five acres here, but this guy's gonna own it over here if he wants to.
Yeah.
Not next to it, and you've got no control over it.
Right, we, we can only control this in the city, still zone it.
Right, right.
Yeah.
That's exactly right.
Yeah, if you want to...
The city actually can regulate land use, um, and it's ETJ.
They don't have an ETJ.
The city could claim it and then go in and actually do that. And so, there is an ability for the city to eventually get to a point where it extends some of its zoning apparatus to have one into an ETJ. That is something to keep in mind, but it's not something that would happen overnight or immediately.
Nor do we want to open that can of warrants, I hope.
The other thing is on zoning, if you're going to do that, a couple requirements of it, are that you have to have a comprehensive plan, that comprehensive plan would have to go with your P and Z committee, and then you would have to have a public hearing that allows for, um, public input and actual written evidence, that comprehensive plan has to really be latched down with some actual specific data. Um, so that's just a couple things to keep in mind in getting to the long-term project, things that you have to do before getting there.
I mean, I'm not, I'm not against it, I just want, we're just talking something that...
Yeah.
It's nothing.
Well, right, right now, we're stalling out, and I'm, I'm trying to get us unstalled, okay, um...
I have a question here. I'd like clarification, when you just said that you would like the council not to add things to the agenda for the next seven months, so you don't want to...
No, 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 no.
He meant his workload.
My workload.
Okay, okay.
Not the actual agenda.
Yeah. Discuss proposals and options for minor building updates to improve security for city hall, Jonathan?
Uh, yes, I put that on there, if you go to any other city public utilities, they have a front lobby, and I was thinking that it would probably be beneficial to start using the front office up there as a front lobby, it's got a door, it's got access, and it limits access to documents that people don't need to access to. If you come in, there you go, you can do all your business up there, there's no need to be back here in the office or anything. That would have to be addressed. Now, we give it, uh, Chance, who got you?
Yeah. Handicap accessible.
Yeah, that would have to be addressed, that's why, it's just on there, this does possibly do or something, you know, we got...
Obviously, somebody could come in, you know, that might be one of the ten people that you want to...
No, but it's all, like, you go up to the water company, they got their secretaries, they got their windows, they just kind of set it up like, like a city hall or office building would be.
In a way, you don't have access to the entire building.
Sir, are you back here all the time?
Usually I'm in that office, but I have like a monitor that shows me the camera, so I can see people coming in. But if we need to set it up in a lobby style back there, then I can put a buzzer in there. But I, you know, I, first, I didn't quite get it, but then I started thinking about it. I went in Golson Water, they have a teller window. Chalk Rock Water, they have a teller window. You go to West, you do registration, there's a teller window. You know, that would actually be nice.
Even the city of West, City of West has a window. Any, anyone want to open the floor to debate? Any debate up here? Item I, discuss city park progress. I'm going to cover most of this in the mayor's report, but suffice it to say, I did get all three letters. So, and then I'll cover it more in detail in the mayor's report.
Can I ask you a question, Dave?
Sure.
Because I won't be able to speak during the month. What, I know it's Texas Wild, the green signs that showed up on Facebook or whatever, that Texas Wildlife Trails and Texas Wildlife, or Texas Park. These grants you keep talking about, are they one or the other, or you're talking about both or what?
There's four grants that are available right now.
Okay.
And I have not sat down and pared it down to which one of the four, that's why I've seen some of the stuff that's going around on Facebook. They're like, oh, this is, it's, this is the way it's set up, and it's eighty percent, you gotta pay back this, and I don't even know if that's someone that I'm gonna pick. You know, there's, you know, there's.
All of them's like that. All of them, you gotta, you gotta put up a hundred percent, and then, and then they pay you back the percentage. And another thing is, Mary, I know, I know that you donated the park, but if she backs out, we gotta pay, in the twenty years, we gotta pay all that back. All of the bank, all that we get, all the grant we get, we gotta pay back. I, I, I ain't saying.
What are you talking about, me backing out?
No, I'm just, no, I'm just saying if we couldn't.
Do you know why it would be backed out of?
If we cut trees or something, or nothing like that.
That is not what, you need to read what was signed by this.
Okay, well, I'm just saying.
Well, I'll tell you. It's a, it put me in this, it's a matter of if it does not stay apart, and if it is not maintained and kept in good shape, then it reverts back, and that is only, it's up to everybody, but it's not me coming back and saying, oh, God, it's.
I know, I know, I, I, I didn't.
I've heard that's been said.
No, but I didn't say that. I didn't, I didn't, I didn't say, I'm just saying, because if we don't maintain it or something, and it does go back to you, we gotta pay that, that, all that money back.
And that'll be a stupid tax on our park.
Yeah.
I'm just saying. Later on that road, something happens, I don't want, I don't want the city to be stuck with that money. Be stuck with it, that's what I'm just saying.
Well, me, me and Zach have been kind of muddling around with the road thing, where I'm very confident there will be money in the budget for a park. So, we'll talk about that. We don't have roads on the agenda this time, but.
Can we finish asking this question?
Oh, sorry.
I would, yeah, I had questions.
I'm sorry.
And everybody gets up, up, uproar. Uh, it does. Uh, art, uh. Okay, I was asking about the grants, what kind they were, okay. And the next question I was going to ask was if they're not, I'm not saying it's a block grant, but like a block grant, are they shared cost, or they reimbursable grants, what kind of grants are?
It depends, some of them are reimbursable, some of them are fifty-fifty. That's why I say that, it depends on which grant we go for. Some of them, they'll cover fifty upfront, we cover fifty. There's like four grants that are available. We haven't got to that point yet. What, next step is going to be getting someone, we gotta kind of design this and figure out what we're gonna do. Because if one of the grants was, you could do, part of it is a walking grant, part of it actually has motorized vehicles. Is that the one we're gonna go for? I don't know. One of them is just a walking grant, one of them, you know.
Well, and there's a difference in the amount of grant money you get.
Right.
If it's motorized or not motorized.
Right.
Okay, but the, the other question I was wondering about is, okay, what about electrical stuff? How do you have to treat that if you're going to have any power?
Yeah, at some point, we're gonna have to run electrical out there, and we have lights.
How do you have to run that? Have you checked that out, or do you know?
Just like you would run any other, just like we ran electrical here. It'd be in the city of Golson, we run power out to it.
I don't check it out.
I can figure that out for us when it comes to it.
I'm a master electrician, okay.
I guess what he's trying to say is, is what it sounds like to me, he's trying to say is, can you get a meter there, can you give their whole access to get a transformer there? Sometimes you have to cross other people's land to get a transformer down, to down set to get a level power.
Kevin, but the other question is, are you allowed to put exposed high line wires across that park?
Or, there's restrictions.
That's what I'm asking, do you know that?
Yes, and he's an electrician.
He does.
That's what he does for a living.
Yes, there is certain restrictions. There are certain restrictions, but you can put high lines in certain areas depending on what you're using the park for.
Okay.
And you're on the ground, can't you?
Yes, you can walk the ground.
And, and that, that goes back to, that's, this is all.
These are just questions I'm wondering about, because undoubtedly, you haven't done a whole lot of planning about what you might be getting into.
Which is why I want a park planner, because I don't know anything about parks.
And stuff, and, and everything, because, yeah, oh, because, like, for example, are, are they gonna be able to come out at any time and inspect at any point in time during that period if you've got that park?
Who's they, the grant people?
Yeah, Texas Park and Wildlife.
Never heard of that. I've never heard of that.
We still, we still won't know that until we figure out which grant we're gonna go for.
Yeah. Vernon, you were on the, you were on the, did you ever go out and inspect? You were on the grant committee.
There are people that come out and do, do those inspections.
I'll tell you what you might ought to do, you might ought to go into the park and wildlife thing and look up these restrictions that they're putting on this site. And stuff before you go in further, just to kind of get an idea of what needs to be done.
Yeah, because some of them, you might have to pay, plant native grasses and stuff, and if you gotta do that, then there ain't no reason to get in that one because you have grass and need to get a park.
No, are you gonna have to have a public hearing on it?
Yeah, yeah, well, we, we have access to H2O, and we have access to MRB group, and that's all they do is grants, so if we need to reach out and we need some guidance for the grants.
No, I'm asking a public hearing on it with the community, is what I'm asking. You're gonna have to have a public hearing on it.
I, we're gonna have to cross that bridge when we get to it. Like, we're not even there, we're not there yet.
The answer is yes, you will have to have a public hearing.
You're gonna have to have a public hearing, and ask these public to the paper, and also, I have to follow Title VI Civil Rights Act requirements.
And, and I'm not saying you're not right. I'm saying we're gonna.
Go Google it and find out.
Yeah, I'm gonna, we're gonna hire someone who knows that stuff to walk us through this. I'm not, I've never done a park before. So, uh, we did city planning. Discuss TML Economic Development Conference attendance. We, okay, we just heard it. Rick, I'm gonna defer to you because you were out there this last weekend.
Yeah.
This is like the eighth or ninth time I've heard it, and I've said it, I'm gonna reiterate it. We don't have water, we don't have sewer. We need to form, and start looking at forming some sort of economic zone. Did not, Mr. Pat Curry say that over the weekend, where's your economic zone, right?
Yeah, he said that.
He said, you don't have water, exact words, you don't have water, you don't have sewer, you need an economic zone. Nobody here likes the property taxes. If we get the right economic zone, there are cities in Texas that pay no property tax, that pay none. Golson's not an expensive city to run, it's really not. If we have the right economic zone, whatever it is, you know, producing something, or selling something, or, you know, that's gonna take the, a lot of the pressure off of, of the tax base here. And so, that's something that we need to look into. There's a tax, uh, no, there's a Economic Development Conference that I wanted to send Sarah to. I've already taken the Economic Development class like two or three times, or two, or three different variations of it. I wanted her to take it so she gets ramped up, because we gotta have some continuity with whoever the next administration is, we have to have some continuity. So, we need to get, these are things that we need to get started now, I'm going back to like some of the stuff I brought up. That should have been done five years ago, we never did, and now we're trying to play catch-up. Melissa?
You say economic zone, which, you know, right now, that's the Dollar General and Golson Store, that brings in sales tax. Where in Golson do you think you would be able to put an economic zone?
We had one, they did, they turned it down. It was the travel trailer park, because they had to buy it in a crap load of money.
No, 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 that's not an economic zone, an economic zone.
My understanding of economic zone, you correctly come on, would be like a, kind of like a downtown area, like, for instance, Rosebud Scott, a downtown area, okay? My question is, where would you put that at? Because.
The first part.
You don't have really a place to do that with.
The first part of that would be, we'd have to go do it like I did with the, sitting down with the, with the map and the zones, right? We have to sit down and have, at one point, that land that was about eighteen fifty-eight and nine thirty-three was for sale.
Which, which land?
Well, the old ballpark was for sale about ten, eleven years ago.
Yeah, it's not, so.
It's not now, but, but, you know, they really, really should have bought it ten early years ago.
Where, where else would you put it?
There's forty acres that's for sale right by the fireworks stand, right? Isn't that forty acres?
Yeah, how many do you think the days drove?
Yeah, I mean, and you can't say what's available, like, even today, it's gonna be, yeah, it's not what, we can't even say what's available today because if we start this economics and its own plan, and we don't even kind of get an idea or get affirmed up for a whole year, that's when we look for what's available. You know, that's, that's the part where we would have to figure out, what are we gonna do? Are we gonna do a car lot? You know, maybe we can attract some kind of car dealership out here. Well, that's one thing.
So, the people that own the land, like, you know, these big swatches of land, like, you know, Russell's Pecan, now that's up for sale.
Right.
So you're talking about going in and zoning that type of area?
It, it could be.
And, so then the landowner can't just do whatever they want to with it as far as, they would have to find businesses that would be willing to come out here to take that, correct?
Correct. There's a, there's an attorney that, there's an attorney that's a specialist in that, that we would get, you know, I will, hopefully, we'd get him involved. That's what he does, is go up, and he would come.
So, y'all are gonna sit and do that to somebody's land?
No, you, you'd buy it.
No, if it became bought by the city.
Yeah.
So do you have that kind of money to buy that?
You could do bond elections, there's all different kinds of ways.
Bond elections. So you're talking about going up on people's taxes with a bond election? That's what you're talking about?
No.
That's what that is, though.
No, you're using your question to lead him into.
No, you gotta have money to buy something. That's what she, the bottom line, you gotta have money to buy it.
Yeah.
And what you're talking about is, is can you afford it?
Yeah.
So if you can't afford something, everybody can only live where they can afford.
Right.
So you don't go looking at a million dollar house if all you can afford is two hundred thousand.
Right, but there's a bunch.
At the end of the day, you can't afford to go buy Russell's Pecan.
Right, but there's.
So we're talking about it.
But, well, because there's, there's a, there's a bunch of, I'm not an expert in this, they're.
I'm just, I'm just asking.
No, he, he's right, no.
I mean, you, you don't.
There's a.
You can afford a forty thousand dollar truck, you don't go look at a hundred.
Right, but maybe I can finance a forty thousand dollar truck. There's, there's a bunch of financial vehicles that are available, and that's where you get to expert, like, there are a lot of small cities.
But experts cost money.
Yes.
Experts on parks, experts on industrial, experts, experts.
Yeah.
Experts come with a dollar sign.
Right.
Do you have the money for all the experts?
Yes.
So what, what is your financial statement say, say right now that you thought? Cash on hand?
No.
I can tell you.
I believe it says a hundred fifty-two thousand.
We had in Texas for, what was it, five, five hundred and some thousand, and what is it in Golson? Three hundred thousand.
We've got shit to do, we've got families.
So you've completed, you went from five hundred thousand down to three hundred and some thousand, and that's cash on hand. I don't think that that's going to be able to purchase a whole lot of property.
Well, I, I've said this before, yeah, and I almost, then we gotta move to the next question. I hear all the time, I hear all the time out, out here, it can't be done, it can't be done, it can't be done. I don't want to hear that, I want to hear how are we gonna do it? Because it can be done. We don't know which way, there are a myriad of options that we can do, if it's just getting the right people plugged into the right places. So, I mean, everyone said we couldn't have a city park, and we have a city park. Everyone said, oh, we can't get all the roads fixed, and the roads are all getting fixed. I don't want to hear it can't be done. It can, it's just how. That's, that's the difference between me and you.
If it rights the city, then you're not gonna have to worry about that.
It's possible that somebody, some outside money comes in and just decides, no, that's not a bad idea. They could use a, another convenience store that sells gas and other things in the area, comes out and buys twenty acres and builds it with their money and not ours, but we don't know.
Until you look into it.
I mean, if you don't entertain the idea, it'll never happen.
Also, within some of those grants you discussed, would be included packages for purchasing property, et cetera, which has been done before under, in a different Texas Parks and Wildlife Act. So, that would be included within the grant.
Maybe we got a Department of Defense contract out here. Item L, discuss damage done to River Road and Silver River Road.
So, so I've, I've looked at, well, River Road's been hit twice with, with a track, metal track, either dozers or, or excavators. And then Silver River Road, that's still, that one got hit years not, not too long ago. The first time, River Road got, got, but it wasn't much, it was kind of superficial damage the first time. And the second time, not so superficial, the edge of the road is kind of busted up. It's, you can't see it now because it's, it's been covered up with some road face, and dirt's been pushed off into the crack. But, that's going to be a pothole. That's how potholes get started. If we keep letting, there's, there's pictures in the packet showing where the edge of the road was broken up. If we keep, if something, if we don't, if we keep letting them do it, we're gonna, it's just gonna cost the city more money. They gotta stop unloading their, their truck vehicles on our roads. They need to get off the road, unload it, get out, or put tires down or something. The, the stuff on Silver River Road isn't, you know, is kind of superficial, but eventually, it's gonna, they're gonna cause bigger problems when we keep letting them do it. So, I'm gonna suggest that the city put a fine for any truck vehicles that are, that are driven on our city streets, that there be a fine, a minimum fine of five hundred dollars.
But that's going forward, not.
Going forward.
Going forward. Would I really enforce that, David?
I'll put the ordinance go, I already have something like that. I mean, the main issue on this one, I just need a quote on the damage. I mean, y'all get me a quote on the damage, I'll take care of it. I don't know what a quote is.
Well, he doesn't got it.
Yeah, I got you. I just, I'll handle it, I just need to know how much damage is.
Do you happen to know who's responsible, like, whose land?
But, so, no matter, no matter whether there's damage or not, if it leaves scraps, if it leaves scars on the road, and there's evidence that they've driven a metal track, a piece of machinery on the, on the roads, there should be a minimum of five hundred dollar fine.
I'll take a look at the ordinance, Matt.
If we can find out who did it, and we can prove who did it, there should be a minimum of a five hundred dollar.
The first one was in Lolly. Melissa?
I just had a question except about, you know, if you're gonna do that, what about all the tire marks all over the place? Kids burning out, that kind of stuff. You don't start with that, you might as well start doing that.
The truck vehicles actually damage the roads and create potholes.
I know, I understand.
Kids burning their, burning their tires off their cars is not gonna make a pothole.
The only thing I'm interested in is if it actually caused damage. That's why I need to have a quote, because if it didn't cause damage, nothing.
Billy and Lolly? Billy?
Uh, I told Zach about this a while ago. Up on Westy Chapel Road, close to Roselle Pass, somebody came down through there, I wanna work with a piece of farm equipment, is this going to only apply to things, or could, can it apply to farm equipment? Because there's probably a good two hundred feet, maybe more, where somebody took gouges out about eighteen inches, two foot long, by about two and a half, three inches wide, that actually went down through the pavement. And I, and I talked to you.
Yeah, I'll go by and take a look.
You told me you was gonna look at it. What I'm, what I'm getting, my point I'm getting at is, he's talking about, if I know track things. What I'm talking about, anybody that comes down through there and something, and damages, is that probably gonna apply to them too?
If they damaged the road, I mean, that one kid, I mean, he, he damaged the road, and we had him loading tires up in that trailer on, for a whole weekend.
No, that, that wasn't, that wasn't a road deal. He, he.
I thought that was a road.
No, he had, uh, where he passed out, and he ran into the school sign.
Oh, okay.
Okay, and knocked down.
I thought, I thought he did something to the road.
Went through two trees, and nearly hit the porch and stuff there, and he, and he was a good worker. He worked here.
Yeah, he was. He was plenty good.
Lolly?
But, anyway.
Yeah, I got a question. You say we put road, we put road base in the crack, right?
Well, there's some dirt in there where the crack was.
Okay, so when I met with the.
And I'm not saying y'all did that on purpose, that's just coming in and out, you're gonna track it. And I'm not saying y'all did that on purpose, that's just coming in and out, you're gonna track it.
Yeah. Because you said what you had to say. So can I speak?
Yes.
What I'm getting at is, is when I met with the county out there, he wanted y'all to come out there to show him where the damage was, cause he couldn't see none. That's what the county, John with the county.
Yeah.
Because he was over here looking at Chip Seal Road.
Yep.
And he said, the first tracks that were made on the road with the sun and the traffic has already shut back up. My problem with this is, is tell the truth. Because if I owe the city money for the road damage, I will be the first person to come up here and write you a check. But don't say that we cracked the road and pushed dirt in it so nobody can see, because that's what you just said.
No, I didn't say you pushed it in there.
No, I'm just telling.
But there's, there's, just the process of, I know y'all.
Where, 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 where's the damage on Silver River at?
It's, it's superficial, is what I'm saying.
No, where's the damage at?
It's over there where that, was in.
No, 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 because that's the problem. Everybody talks around the subject. Answer the questions.
I'll, I'll, I'll address it head on, here, here's the deal. Did, no, you gotta look, are you gonna listen to what I gotta say?
I know, because he's, he's the road guy. Why would I listen to you?
I just want you to understand the process, right? So if Zach does a call and gives a complaint that there's a gouge in the road, he's gotta check it out. He's, he's basically an investigator.
I understand that, one hundred percent. He's doing his job, is what he's supposed to do.
Anyway, when I went out, there was cracks in the edge of the pavement, right there, I've got photos of it. Now, if they close back up, I can't help.
And, and I got another question.
But there is dirt right there that.
I got another question.
Let me interject real quick. I was gonna reach out if there was actual damage. I don't have a quote, I don't know if there's actual damage, so I haven't reached out. If I find something, you're a good reasonable person, I'll give you a call, I know we can work it out from there.
I understand.
But I haven't reached out to you yet, just because I don't.
I don't, I understand all that.
I don't, I'm just letting you know.
I understand that. And do I need to have culverts right there?
Probably so.
There's the ditch.
I, I don't know, cause no one else have, I, I'm looking, I'm not seeing any.
But there is a ditch, there is a ditch there.
Vernon called him and said that I need culverts. He called somebody.
I didn't call him, I didn't call him.
You didn't call Chris Kiel?
I didn't call Chris Kiel. I talked to Chris Kiel. I told Chris, I said, you need to tell Lolly that he's probably gonna need culverts.
Get a hold of you or the city?
You get a hold of the city.
No, better, okay. Well, yeah, just call, call, call Sarah, if you have, if you have to have them, I have to have.
Just like I told you when you pulled up on my property, Eddie, if I gotta have them, everybody else down that road's gotta have them.
I don't think you have, I don't want him to speak, but I don't think you have to have them. Yeah.
But we'll look into it.
I don't think, I don't, I don't think you do, because I, I live on a strip road and it, and it's a county road and I ain't gotta have no culvert. If I ain't gotta have no culvert, you sure should have no culvert, cause you don't.
I'm just, I'm just saying.
Yeah.
I'm not, I'm not trying to be a horse's butt, but what I'm trying to say is, is keep, keep the conversation straight.
Right.
Cause everybody talks around the conversation.
Right, and, and we, we had that conversation, right?
Well, you had that conversation.
I'm trying to keep the division.
I understand.
Yeah.
I have nothing wrong with you, Eddie.
I wanna, I wanna work with you, you know.
But, but I wanna work with straight.
Yes, no, absolutely.
Straight, no gray. It's black or white.
We're trying to get.
What you do for one person, do for the other.
Yeah, we're trying to get, I didn't see any culverts.
Fair enough.
I think I even said that that day, I said I didn't see any culverts.
No, I, I just told you, the problem with this place right here is, is nobody can get along.
That's a big part of it, but.
Nobody can get along. So everything that you sit up here and waste people's time, and I'm not saying that none of your ideals are bad, but when this town is split in half, you're gonna have nothing.
I, you're preaching to the choir.
I agree. Okay, so why are we talking about it?
Which, which?
Why, why are we talking about a park? Nobody's gonna give you money, Eddie. If the town is split in half, get on Facebook. You, you wanna, you wanna sit here and get volunteers? I'll go clean the whole property for you for free. But what, what is that for? You ain't gonna have nothing else. Cause it's them. Because everybody's over here talking, everybody's over here talking. Why can't people just get on the same page?
Amen.
Amen.
Why can't you get on the same page?
I agree.
You're talking about ninety thousand dollars for a park. We can donate, me and her can donate to ninety thousand, how are you planning on taking care of it? Cause this lady right here gave you land, you gotta take care of it.
It's not on the agenda.
No, 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 can I speak?
Yeah.
This lady right here said, I'll give you land, you gotta take care of it, you gotta maintain it. So if everything is donated, how are you gonna take care of it?
Okay, I, I'll, I'll take this step, I gotta gavel us out, because we, yeah, we're, we're, okay, so here's the deal.
I gotta move on.
No, no, Lolly, I want you to hear this, cause.
No, I'm, I'm done hearing it, y'all gotta move on.
No, no, no.
That's the problem, that's the problem.
No, no, we gotta gavel out.
Everything that happens has to be moved on. When you don't like hearing something, it has to be moved on.
You missed, you misunderstood what I'm saying, Lolly.
Move on.
No, no, I have to gavel us out for the regular meeting. Yeah, listen, I'm gonna close on this. There are towns half our size that have a city park, but for some reason, Golson can't pull it off. I'm, I'm sorry, I failed.
We can and we will.
Yeah, we can and we will, I, I failed to, I failed to understand how.
I'm gonna listen to an eight-year-old girl who wants a park and a bunch of other kids want a park.
I, yeah, there's some kids, yeah.
On the order of the regular meeting, Mr. Maddox, would you like to open us in a prayer?
I'd love to.
Dear Heavenly Father, Creator of the universe, Lord, we just humbly approach your throne and just, oh, we just pray that tonight be a night of just understanding and growth and listening, Lord, listening out of open hearts to listen and how best is us on the council as we sit here, Lord, in positions to serve our community, serve our citizens, and grow to become a community that is unified, Lord, not divided. We lift you up and pray these holy things in your name, Jesus' name, amen.
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 I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Approval of minutes for these September 25th, 2025, regular meeting minutes.
I make a motion to approve of it.
Rick Maddox makes a motion that we approve of minutes. Do I get a second?
A second.
Is that second? Holly, do you want the second?
It doesn't matter.
Holly, second. All in favor? unanimous? Citizen comment. Public is invited to address the council. Republic is respectfully requested to limit the comment by minutes. The public should identify their names, street, or city, and may address any subject. By state law, the council may not engage in discussion on any matter not listed on the agenda. City policy is that each person who desires to address the council must speak on his or her own behalf and may not reserve or grant time to another person. Any citizen comment? Billy?
Billis Park, 1067 West, Chapel. I want to address some things about your financial report and stuff, and there's some items over here that are being carried just as a category, like dues, fees per seat, an amount of six thousand something dollars. That needs to be listed out in that report as what those are for. I know, because people understand what the money's spent for. It probably solves a lot, so many problems if people use what the money's spent, what's spent for. I know probably tax, credit card, the federal district fees, the tax office fees, and stuff like that, hot dogs, but just that total number up there doesn't tell you anything. Doesn't tell you either. Other than there was six thousand dollars and something else that's been on paper. Same thing with your insurance. I know you got a check that was written to five thousand dollars and something to CML for insurance. It's only known as insurance. What was that insurance? There's about five different insurances on that bill over there I just looked at and stuff. And then you've got this, and then when you get back here on your horizontal sheets where they're showing mutt by mutt to mutt, there's different figures put in there under insurance. It doesn't tell you what it is. You have no idea, no, no. So it would solve a lot of y'all's headaches if you itemize this thing like it ought to be itemized instead of just trying to use all categories and stuff on it. But there is, and the other thing is, and I know this because I used to do it, but Telo Hill and Brown and Matthew told us way back there that this, these packets and these financial reports and stuff ought to be made available by all the city council at least the Monday before the meeting, not the day of the meeting or stuff. So y'all can pick up the packet and have a chance to view, which would help y'all in answering questions when people have. It would actually help you if you had this beforehand where you could review it. And it can be. All you've got to do is request Gail down at Telo Hill and Brown, I need this on such and such date before you meet him, and they'll get it to you. But you got to ask for it. This old stuff of, well, they haven't gotten it to us. Well, no, they're not going to get it to you till the last minute unless you ask for it. You're going to have to tell them, they work for you, not the other way around. So if, I'm just telling you, this would help you a lot. And I didn't come up here and ask yesterday or first part of week, I wouldn't see this for this meeting because I wanted to have a chance to look at it. And I finally got it this afternoon about four o'clock. But there's things in here that need to be spelt out so people sitting in this audience can look at this and tell what's going on. And like I said, it would solve a lot of your headaches if you do that and stuff. Because I had a bunch of questions I was going to ask about it, but I talked to Holly this afternoon, and she answered most of my questions. Because I asked her questions about why we got five hundred dollars in a petty cash fund. That was the reason the credit card was gotten in the first place. That's the worst thing to have around any public money is a petty cash fund. Auditors will get all over you about it because that's one way that money can disappear and not have any way of count for it. Those petty cash funds are very hard to audit, even Chapel and stuff. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I want a few minutes. I want to dovetail in with what Billy's saying here, but what I want to say is, is that, it's kind of what I brought up with the credit card restrictions or whatever we want to do on this is, what I'm, what I'm saying is on Billy, what I was trying to say is, and what I was saying earlier in the workshop is, is make those things historicals. Go back five to six years. Do historicals to see the spending habits of the city. It's not that I'm sitting here saying that there was bad spending habits because I'm not. What I'm trying to say in that scenario is, let's go back and look at what our history of spending is so that when the budget committee that I see is going to be formed, again, that budget committee is here to balance the budget. Surely a budget committee wouldn't come before the city council with a deficit budget. So I would think that the budget committee's going to have to have the data to be able to get, to show the spending habits of the city. So that's what I'm talking about when I talk about historical, like what he's talking about. You go back five to six years and you look at what we spent money on, what we allocated money on, what we used money for. All of that, that way you can have a history of spending, and then that budget committee has the tools that they need to be able to balance the budget. Because once again, I would think that whoever's on that budget committee would be representing the city to say, hey, I want to balance that budget. I'm not going to come to the city council with a deficit budget by no means. So I just wanted to clarify what I was talking about in the workshop.
Continuing on what he's saying, I went back and did a 10-year study on all the audits of what was spent and what money was taken in. 10 years, all audits, and I got on the council. And the history of what was going on was you were collecting way, money, tax dollars, and spending like 25 and 30% and 40% of that tax dollars you were taking in every year. That's the reason you ended up with all this fund balance. And that was a very reason that I pushed real hard to get the tax rates through it because there's no sense in keep charging people on the taxes for all those years and stuff. And that's how that money, that's how all this money got to the bank is because they, when I went back and did analysis on those things, that's what I found and stuff. And there were some years they took in over a hundred thousand dollars and spent like 30,000. And this is what created the fund balance that you've gotten right now and stuff because they were not taking care of business and looking at what they were doing.
I think those days have moved on. Okay, moving to items, information to be received, the mayor's report. I've got a lot to report this month. We had a really good month. First thing first, Goldson is officially in the 21st century. We're streaming on YouTube right now. We're streaming on Zoom. We're streaming on Twitter. We actually have a .gov website. We actually have, every one of the council members, you all have emails. Those emails are all secure. They're encrypted. Goldson is officially in the 21st century. This woman deserves a tremendous amount of credit. I pointed her in the direction and she ran miles beyond where I thought we would be this month. I really did. I thought we were only going to be halfway there. She got everything done this, this month. So yeah, tremendous kudos to Sarah on that one. Second thing. In the packet, I got the three letters I mentioned last time. I said I would get three people. Rick, do you want to make the announcement of what Pat Curry said he was going to do for the park?
Volunteer.
Pat Curry is going to come back out here with his own equipment, his own heavy equipment. He's going to help clear the park. That's a tremendous amount of political muscle that we got behind the park. Pat Curry's going to help. I feel very confident. If he's going to come out with his heavy equipment, he already made an appearance this last weekend. He's committed to helping lift Goldson off the ground. He also, if we get our act together, is committed to helping us get an economic zone. He said that. He understands where we're at and where we need to be, and he's very willing to help us get there. Third item, all those trips that I made to Austin, I can't tell you which way to vote, and I'm not going to tell you which way to vote, but there are several tax bills that are on the November ballot. I encourage you, especially if you're over 65, there's a bunch of breaks in here where it takes the homestead from like 100 to 140,000. That's when I showed that other slide when I was talking about the big taxes, the 500 and 1,000. Those are in here, not the 20 or 30 bucks that you're spending on the Goldson City Tax. Those are in here. I encourage you guys, vote in your interest. Those are on this ballot. A lot of those are actually constitutional amendments, Texas constitutional amendments. You don't know how hard that was to get done. You don't know how hard that was to get done. That fell through three times this legislative, this legislative session, three times that fell through. We had to have a regular session and two special sessions to get that done. I think that's it. The mayor's report. City secretary, I stole your thunder.
I, wow, I stuck finance report next.
Oh. Finance report, sorry, Holly.
That's okay. Um, so in your pocket you have the Q three, um, public investment fund report, so, um, if you have any questions over that, that is, um, that is in your packet for you. And then I've also got a, um, a listing of the cost for, the total cost for the Golson Fest in there as well, so it accounts for all of the money that came in. Uh, we earned fifty-six dollars for the dunking booth, two fifty for the vendors, five hundred for the wood grapple, and then, uh, the expenses are listed out, um, exactly for what they were. Um, for overall, the net cost of the Golson Fest, it looks like is two thousand eight hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Do we, we have any CDs for me to look at?
Do you have any CDs coming up?
Um, there was a CD that came up, however, with all the banking things, I think they just rolled it over.
Yeah, uh, and then next month, I think there's actually going to be two on there that are like, once we're doing November sixth.
We're in regular meeting, Billy, no questions.
But yeah.
Yeah, we got some more coming up, but the one that was coming up in October, they, uh, with the banking change and everything, they kind of rolled it over just so that we keep a better rate.
Anything else? Council?
I didn't want to ask.
City secret.
I didn't want to ask a question, I wanted to give you some information, but.
We're, we're regular meeting right now, so. Uh, city secretary report? Talk for us after the meeting.
I don't really have a whole lot to report. I went to a, um, thing that Waco NPO hosted where they talked a lot about city planning, so once, uh, P and Z starts back up, I might have like a little presentation for y'all to pass on some of that information. But I just don't feel usual.
City attorney?
Still reviewing a lot of the city financial records, so I'm hoping once I've kind of gone through that independently, coming from down the agenda, and then handle that issue at a later date. I just wanted to let everyone know that it wasn't left off. Um, I'm just still going through all the records and things like that. You'll have to forgive me, but it takes time to go through this, with everything else going on. Uh, that's the only thing I have to report on at this time.
Consent agenda. Counsel to consider any agenda item with master's under the consent agenda. Note, any council member can request that a particular item be removed from consent, for discussion. Approval of the September finance report. Oh, I'm sorry, Kevin, I missed you. Thank you.
No, we don't, we didn't have a meeting this month, because we didn't, we had someone resign and we're below quota, so I need another person.
If anyone else would like to volunteer for planning zoning, we are desperately in need of a planning and zoning, especially for the plans that I did a presentation on, I need help.
They can email me at secretary@cityofgolson.gov.
What? Say that again?
It's secretary@cityofgolson.gov.
Dot gov? That sounds official. Consent agenda. Counsel to consider, oh, I already read that. Um, approval of the September finance report.
Make a motion to approve it.
Zach makes a motion that we approve? Rick seconds, all in favor? Unanimous. Approval of, and acting upon authorization to issue payment for pending bills, purchase orders, and/or accounts payable.
Make a motion to pay our bills? Second.
Rick makes a motion to pay the bills, but the second's all in favor? Unanimous. Items to be considered. Counsel may vote on or act upon each one of the items on the agenda. Consider and act upon the fall citywide cleanup. Do you have a motion for a date and how much we're going to pay Eric?
Board, are we going to do two days or one day? That's what we're going to start.
What have we?
Floor's open for debate.
Where have we been doing, two days?
We've been doing it Saturday to Sunday.
What's a good Saturday sound like where we do it? Do it, do it, what day y'all want? November, y'all want November or December?
Twenty, twenty-second and twenty-third in November?
Twenty-second, twenty-third, November, sounds good to me.
Are you making that informal motion?
I'll make the motion that we have it, uh, November twenty-second and twenty-third.
And paying Eric how much?
Um, should that be a separate motion?
I won't be here, so.
We got Eric, who's who we're paying for.
This is handy having a tractor around.
Tommy, you going to be the other?
Who has this, who can mash some stuff down?
Counselor?
I'll do it.
We, we can make the motion for how much we're paying him and the date in one motion, right? Do the twenty-second, twenty-third, paying Eric. Billy, it's X amount? Or does it have to be two separate motions?
Y'all have the bonds to cover it under the budget?
It's in there.
Yeah, for city cleanup.
City cleanup.
You haven't spent that already?
No.
No, that's your bond.
No, the question was, does it, can both points be in the motion, both points can be in the motion, right? It's going to be this day and we're going to pay him.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so then I made the motion that we have it November twenty-second, twenty-third, and that we pay him five hundred dollars. Eric?
I second.
Billy?
Is it five hundred per day or five hundred total?
Well, how much are we paying?
Yeah.
Five hundred total, okay, five hundred total, I second that.
Did you, did you get your motion? Five hundred, okay. Bucky, Bucky's seconds, all in favor? Unanimous? Motion passes. Uh, consider and act upon a meeting for a scheduled three in the holidays.
The Mondays that y'all picked was November seventeenth and December fifteenth. Those are like the Mondays the week before.
I made the motion that we move November's meeting to the seventeenth and December's meeting to, instead of fifteen?
Yeah.
I second that.
So Jonathan made, made the motion, Bucky's seconds, all in favor? Unanimous? Consider and act upon credit card usage policy. Holly, do you want to make the motion since it was your agenda item?
I'd presumably, I don't know if I can make that motion.
Okay.
Okay, so I make a motion that we, um, adopt a city credit card usage policy based off of the sample that I provided in the packet. Um, pending, um, approval from the city attorneys.
You got a lot, Sarah?
So adopted, pending approval from.
Adopt, adopt based off the sample in the packet? Pending. The city attorney.
I second that.
Bucky's seconds, all in favor? Unanimous? Uh, consider and act upon adopting a formal time off request form.
Um, that really wasn't necessary to have on there as an action item, it was just more of an informative thing.
You want to remove it from the agenda?
I mean, it, it, I don't feel like it should have been put on this, uh, regular meeting agenda, so I, I, I think that it needs to be removed, so I make that motion.
Holly makes a motion to strike item D off the agenda, do I got a second?
Second.
About to say this, all in favor? Unanimous? Consider and act upon traffic study for Hamilton and Quillen.
Still regular, until they're available, right?
Yeah, I guess we, we can approve, but we, I guess wait till, wait till they're available, the trailer's available. Do it.
Well, your motion would be, is that what you want to try and do is get the trailer?
Yeah.
That's the free one, right?
Yeah. Yeah, so.
So we're.
I make a motion, we, uh.
What was the name of that trailer, so we have a specific?
Uh, I think.
Speed trailer.
Yeah, I think it's a speed trailer, a speed traffic trailer from Waco NPO.
Waco NPO, that's what I was looking for.
I make a motion, we get the, uh, speed trailer from the Waco NPO.
Rick Maddox, Rick Maddox makes a motion that we get the speed trailer from Waco NPO, Bucky's seconds, all in favor? Unanimous? Consider and act upon variance submitted by John Adams.
Sorry, John, it's just, it's just, we're stuck, we're stuck right now, you can't do nothing with y'all, right now. We're just, we're stuck because we made, made five acres, so you just have to wait for a while until we figure something out.
I think the, the zoning thing was, was, I'm going to, I'm going to sit with that a little bit, but I do, I do like the idea of the zoning.
Counselor?
And y'all can grant a variance.
Right.
Some way variances work is, you have your general rule. Someone says, I think that there needs to be an exception to the general rule based on undue hardship or specific circumstances that aren't considered by the general variance, uh, the general ordinance. The ordinance being that there's a five-acre apartment with that two hundred road footage. And so they presented this application stating that, and correct me if I'm wrong, the idea being that because you have a lot that's in an area that has a lot smaller lots, um, dividing this and keeping that would not go against the general trajectory, it would be an undue hardship to require this not to be split up.
And it would fall.
Y'all can grant that, you have the power, it's just more a matter of whether you actually want to grant that as a city council based on those. Does that answer that?
Yeah, but if we do it for one, we'll have to do it for all the others, and I, and I don't want to get stuck in that again.
I think, um, I agree with Bucky, I, I think the, and it's not fair to the other gentleman, that was actually from, I believe, the same organization you guys are from. So I think, um, and I've, I've talked with the two gentlemen, I think what I want to sit with a little bit is, I, I love your proposal of the zoning of based on an area that there are already homes existing, which their, their home does fall into that category. So what I'd like to do is, um, sit with that a little bit, get that zoning passed, and then have them re-approach, and the other gentleman.
How quickly can we get that?
Yeah, I, I don't think you're tracking with what was, was presented.
Hey, you can't, you can't be for, you can't be for against.
Well, no, I, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, oh, hold on, I'm, I'm clarifying, I'm not for against, I'm just, because something was just stated, you made this sound like it was, this was going to be an overnight thing. The counselor said it's going to be a year. So this is, overall, you're looking at, this is the direction we're going to trend, so if you think we're going to trend that way, if that's the way, then you make your decision based on that.
The, the reservation I have, the problem I has, have, was there, there was another nice young man that sat right here in this audience that we didn't grant variance to, and it was for, I believe, one point nine. And it just, morally, I feel, I feel a problem with just bending it to grant to, to another, you know, um, another couple gentlemen that are coming in with something that was very similar to last month. And, and I can't believe I'm actually agreeing with Melissa Teal on this, but, um, I do agree that there is, if we're going to, we're going to hold it, then we're going to hold the five acres for now. That can change in the future. We've made a move to kind of slow things down a little bit. I think your presentation of the zoning is wonderful. I think that's a direction we can move in. I hope it doesn't take a year, but I would like us to move towards getting the zoning, and in that case, when that happens, out of fairness to everyone that is applied and who will apply, um, they can reapply, and then we can, we can talk about that when that, when we have the zoning done. I hope it doesn't take a year. I don't see why it would take a year. Why would it?
Counselor?
Why, why would it take a year to establish?
So to do zoning, you have to create a municipal plan. So municipal plan is where you sit there and you look at what is your growth and what is your development going to be like in the next, uh, ten, fifteen years. And you actually outline what the areas the city are, what the population expectancies are, and then what areas and zones you want to do. The reason you're doing a comprehensive plan is you have to by law, but you also have to be able to hold up to muster, because you're going to have to survive a public hearing. And that public hearing is where people can present evidence, and then they will argue against it and try to modify it and things like that. And your planning and zoning committee has to be a part of it. By law, they have to go through and help you with that comprehensive plan and create it. So to create an effective plan that's going to require long-term zoning and actually is usable, it's going to take a very long time to get that put together, and also to make sure it's effective. Um, for instance, if you look at Waco's comprehensive plan, I don't think Golson's would be that level, but that's about a fifty to eighty-page document that goes really in-depth into populations and things like that. Um, so it's not just a simple overnight project. The issue is you could try to pass something, just like the general idea Eddie's put together to start things with, um, but then you wouldn't be able to defend it. Because you actually have to go through and do a little bit of work to figure out why these zones exist, to make sure you have the exact boundaries. Um, and Eddie's plan's a good starting point, it's just not going to be the finished product. He just wanted to get the idea rolling. So I think that's kind of what you're kind of going for, right, Eddie?
Right, and the other thing too is, we don't have a P and Z right now.
Do we need some?
Yeah, we, we, we need some input, so we're, we're standing, so basically, and that, and I, I want everyone to have a really complete picture. We just will do no new building in Golson under five acres, ever. I mean, as it stands right now, because if we, if we grant one, we grant them all, which is not, you can grant a variance. If, if we think it's going to trend, if you think it's going to trend in that direction, you can grant it, but if, if we're just going to keep it at five acres, then yeah, we just deny them all. You know?
I think unfortunately, that's where we're at at the moment. And it's not fair, I can't look at the other gentleman in the eye, then we deny the variance on his.
Was he in the yellow?
Um, I don't know, I remember, but, like, the gentleman in Bill's cabinets, um, nice young man, same thing. Actually, Bucky and I were both here, we both, even luckily, it hurts my heart, but we can't, if we do it for you, we have to do it for everyone. And unfortunately, that's just, that's just part of the rule that we passed, and if we're going to bend rules, then let's not have them. So I think at the, at the moment, where we're at, this is, this is something that maybe in the future can be changed, but at the moment, that's what we have.
Well, intended to be changed in the future, it was never intended to be permanent.
Right, but it's something to give us a placeholder for now, and then work to get the zoning and actually become, you know, a city with proper zoning. So, um, it's not easy, it's not an easy decision. It sucks, and that's part of this job that we volunteer to do, but it's, it is what it is, and it's been passed, and it is a rule. So, um, you know, sorry, guys, really sorry, you guys seem like great guys, and I would say, keep, stay persistent and let us kind of get the zoning together, and once we get the zoning together, you know, you guys can come back and, along with everyone else that wants some kind of, it's in that zone, right, within the zones that we, we decide, um, we go from there, so. I want to make a motion that we deny the variance.
One second.
Rick makes a motion we deny, Jonathan's second, all in favor? Unanimous? Consider and act upon possible changes to ordinance amendment twenty twenty-five dash zero eight dash eight, amending Golson ordinance code ten dash zero two dash zero zero nine.
If you, uh, look through your packet, you're going to see a document that says amendment number twenty twenty-five eleven eight. Look at everyone a second to find that. Have you found it? If you turn to page four, you'll see the actual ordinance section that would be modified. I'm still seeing shoplifts always, uh, when it gets quiet, it'll keep going. Get in there.
Okay, perfect.
So if you'll see, just like in general, the crossed out text is what would be removed from the ordinance code, and the underlying text is what would be added. This proposed amendment would alter ten point oh two point oh oh nine A one. It would, uh, remove the word first and add the word third, so heirs or benefi, no, if heirs or beneficiaries currently owning a piece of land or relatives by affinity or the third degree of consanguinity desired to subdivide a lot in the individual lots to give themselves, then lots may have a minimum lot size of one hundred and eight thousand nine hundred square feet. Uh, it would further add a sentence at the end, a lot divided under subsection A or B above cannot be transferred to another individual organization for a period of three years. So adding an additional stratification to that exception. Your decision, counsel, would be to deny this, carry this to a second reading, and then if you did want to, either in full or with obligations. If y'all have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
I, I don't have a, I don't have a question, but I just, I'd like to, I just think three years is a bit short. Like five years gives it a little bit more, I don't know. I like that we're opening it up to still family, a third degree, I like that, um, it's just, I think three, that's only thirty-six months, that's a quick turnaround, so I mean, I I could get behind it though. Five years. Maybe five years.
Make a motion, listen, or make a motion to?
This would be the first, this would be the first thing we've modified.
Modify for five years?
Yeah.
All right, well, um, I'll make a motion we accept it, um, with making it a period of five years.
Rick, Rick makes a motion that we accept it, uh, with modification and it's five years. So I got a second, Jonathan, second's all in favor? Holly?
No.
So Zach, uh, Zach, Rick, and Jonathan, yay, Holly, Bucky, and me. Consider and act upon a request for proposals and options for minor building updates and group security for city hall.
I made this motion. Does anybody have an insurance special or whatever about it? And I make a motion we give proposals for, uh, starting the mayor's office into a, just a lobby, and getting it up to, uh, ADA centers for access.
Does that make a motion that we convert the mayor's office to?
To get proposals.
Uh, get proposals. Just convert the mayor's office into a lobby? Yeah, that's ADA sign, uh, second. Rick seconds, all in favor? Bucky? Are you now?
Do you have a budget? Do you have a budget?
Well, they just get proposals at this.
Oh, yeah, they just get proposals.
Have a usability.
I wanna say, I wanna say no right now. Bucky says no. Holly?
I just prefer those from Holly, fine.
So everybody's yay except for Bucky. Consider and act upon planning, counselor. How do we make that motion now? Think we're gonna adopt that?
Uh, zoning idea?
Yeah.
How would they ship it off to P and Z?
Now, you said something when I first talked to you about it. You said there was a specific, that we would, a specific motion would have to be made.
The zoning, probably later on. Probably right now, it's just gonna be shipped off to P and Z to actually start creating it. I'd ship it off to P and Z.
Ship it off to P and Z when we get it reconstituted, we get?
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, we still made the motion, Rick. No, not this. That's actually a plan, that's the beginning of a plan.
We can send and pay the motion to send it to city council, I mean, uh, P and Z, they pray. They need two more people there, so. So I guess they have to.
That'd be shipped to them, but they'll, they'll be adjusted. Yeah, that's my, that's my problem. I'll, I'll, I'll try and get P and Z, me and Kevin, I'll try and get P and Z.
I'll make a motion if we, uh, we send it to P and Z, our city planning to P and Z.
Rick makes a motion that we, um, oh, you seconded. Rick makes a motion that we, uh, forward plan off the, planning and zoning. Zach seconds, all in favor? Unanimous? Consider and act upon T M L Economic Development Conference attended, this is for Sarah.
So, well, before we make the motion, I'll, you want to say, Sarah, and this is for economic, uh, but should we possibly recap planning and zoning, and ask them if we should send one of them, so Sarah, do you want to plan and zoning?
Kevin, that probably would be.
Yeah, Kevin would be.
Then you'd send two people, Sarah and Kevin?
Huh.
Make the motion you send Sarah and a member of P and Z?
I make a motion that we authorize files to send Sarah and Kevin to the, T M L Economic Development Conference.
I say, Jonathan makes a motion that we send city secretary, Sarah, and a member of P and Z Economic Development Conference. All in favor, or who seconded? Rick seconded, all in favor?
I have a question, I'll stop that. Registration is 375.
375.
It's two, it's two days.
It's a two-day conference.
So Karen, send my motion?
Yeah.
And, and change it? I make a motion that we send Sarah or a member of planning and zoning, or, or the other.
Okay. So Jonathan makes a motion that we send Sarah or a member of P and Z. Rick seconds, all in favor? Everyone but Bucky?
I'll fix it, Sarah, but don't mess with it.
Was it, who seconded that?
I've, I've, I've done it one day, so I actually would make a motion. Consider act upon the damaged river road, Silver River Road.
Uh, Rick, uh, make a motion we pay for that. Without having, I had to talk to Jonathan, Johnny Miners, since he went and looked at it, I had to talk to him, so.
Okay. So Zach makes a motion that we table that item. Jonathan seconds, all in favor? Unanimous? Executive, which counselor? Executive session, counselor?
Yeah.
City council members in the executive session at 8:23.
Someone make a motion, you make a motion, you second.
Hey, sit down. You don't need to go anywhere. They're not like you.
Oh.
Well, no, she married. Your daughter's in good shape.
Did you ever know anybody that Richard had in common? Back in the... You?
No, because he's... See, he's three years younger than me. And now maybe one, six or seven years, two. I don't know. One, do you think you know him? You probably do.
I don't know.
So at times it can be... He says, "If you want to go on such a..."
But I know a guy that they were good friends with.
Ridley? Who? Yeah. I remember him like... Oh, my goodness.
If I don't poke on it, if I don't poke on it...
Sporting back, ma'am.
At least you got...
Already got your back, Paul.
Well, I've had a decision. How about that? Well, the next time you see him, tell him to go to the marines at Richard's weatherhouse. How about that? Yeah. I thought of... I know Richard thought a lot of me.
This was going to be done twelve years ago. It's a small world. I was right, wasn't it?
I was right, honey. I remember that other guy's name. Twenty years. I saw this fine... That was eleven.
Somebody called me. Yeah, we broke... It was over.
Did you?
Well, parks is an issue. Thank you.
A lot of trail back.
Did you?
We never take those shots.
You know, at least you just got back here. Let's split us off and go in. I don't think you should have had that very long. Because I think it's same. I wish that house would have been... It was just this little bean house, something about nine minutes worth of beans. I think it hadn't needed a second tank. It seemed like water heater or something. You know, it seemed like that house. Knowing...
There's one over in Carolina, which is...
That's a lot size.
But it's in a home.
Was at least...
Well, I drove down this road this... Never said the name. It had Macy Oaks. Well, she's really a lady. What are you getting to believe? This lady, I said, "Yeah," she said, "Well, you really just didn't..."
But they... But they bought it. It is. It's... It's more than they hold it to take her.
A man with her, me, still knew.
You killed the county in a variance for second. They got a variance for second.
Y'all having fun yet?
That's the first. I had a lot of... I had a... I had a lot over there that I... Actually, I traded wrong. And I went... So what I did, I went down to the county person. I got to... He says, "Yeah." I think it's still part of that, but I just... I know they... That situation, I'm basically going to... The little foxes being around about this little dog. I turned it up. It just comes at all... Forty-one miles. I went over there. I'm a lady. Right here, what you say here.
I'm not one of that.
Which one of our turn rates are session nine oh six?
Come on, Mike.
Uh, considering act upon items listed under section nine, executive section is necessary.
I make the motion that we authorize $300 for legal expenses.
Try to make the motion that we authorize $300 for legal expenses. Do you have a second? Rick seconds. All in favor? Uh, everyone go bucky.